Good evening. Today is May 8th, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the District 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience here and those watching online. Director Alt, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Send moved.
Moved by Director Saxi. Seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will first on our agenda tonight hear about our annual innovation report from Superintendent Dr. Battle.
Thank you Chair Worb and members of the board. First, I'd like to start off with a quote from our strategic roadmap. Supporting and leveraging new methods and original thinking to improve student outcomes is one of our goals, and tonight's innovation report will show the continuity of our staff members who continue to leverage new methods and original thinking. So first, many of you are familiar with our Grow Our Own program. We recently have received another grant from Minnesota Department of Education to support our adult learners. Currently, we have one, a dozen, 191 employees working toward teaching degree. A description that the Grow Your Own grant really helps to support students, excuse me, they're students, but also employees, adult students, and they can receive over a five-year period, $750,000 we've been awarded in this new grant, mostly to pay for tuition and stipends for district employees. Our partner is Metro State University. Next, we have examples of being community strong. So first, let's start with the digital ticket provider. Our athletic department switched to GoFan for athletic tickets. It not only allows online purchases, but point-of-sale purchases, which has been a great option for spectators. The second one is also an athletic innovation. They switched to Huddle for athletic live streaming of events, and the viewer experience and accessibility has been enhanced with that switch. Another one from the athletics department is really providing more language options about general athletic information. Thanks for our wonderful communication department for helping with that. So it's in English, Spanish, Somali, and Mungu. The next one we have is summer lunch and learn from our Nutrition Services Department. This is a collaboration between Food and Nutrition Services with our community education partners. We support three housing complexes in the south region of the district, Chancellor Manor, Arbor Vista Mobile Home Community, and Rambush Estates. So almost every Tuesday lunch period during the summer, we will have a community partner And AROX is a comprehensive cloud-based platform that we use within our community education department. It really allows us to efficiently and effectively manage registrations. It also includes the support for after-school care, VPK preschool billing, enrichment programs, and facility bookings. The next one, categories enhancing employee experiences. So our purchase cards, P-card, Uners, can benefit now from a newer and upgraded website with an improved workflow. Approvers are able to review receipts attached to each transaction instead of searching through a separate file storage system. We all remember computers were to make our lives easier, but sometimes the software do not, so we have a better software. And then, as mentioned earlier, the athletic department switched to Huddle for filming of events. It is also a great learning and teaching tool for coaches and student athletes, so that's the experience for employees with the use of Huddle. Next category is the student support. Continuing our culturally proficient school systems work this year, our transportation partner, Smithy &amp; Sons, has been reporting that the implementation of bus ambassadors for positive behavior intervention and supports, they are experiencing significantly better behavior from our students on buses this year. Not saying that they're bad, but kids can get a little squirrely and paying attention all day in front of their teachers, and so this has really helped to enhance their behavior. This program includes a designated staff member being assigned to each bus route. They check in with the drivers, help students get safely on and off the bus, and they collaboratively problem-solve if the bus driver informs of any issues. So we are glad we're supporting not only in our schools with PBIS, but also to and from school on our buses. We also launched this year our first six weeks of kindergarten program. This is an all-hands-on-deck approach to supporting our kindergarten students designed by the student support leadership specialists with our primary teachers. I will tell you, one of the learnings for our kindergarteners that they have not been in our schools, how many of us have those small milk cartons at home? They can't open. So it's really little things like that. So working with the primary teachers that they understand the expectations and building the right routines and habits right away, so they can be more successful in their kindergarten year. This year was the launch of our Grade 9 Academy. This program has all of our ninth grade students organized into four teams. This allows teachers and support staff to work together around data in order to assess the individual needs of students. There's increased student as well as family outreach. We are seeing stronger attendance and grade attainment. And for '25-'26, we're going to enhance the Grade 9 Academy with the inclusion of the BAR program, Building Assets and Reducing Risk, being paid for a wonderful grant allocation from the county. Also, lastly, our elementary school preschool breakfast. So now we provide breakfast to preschoolers. Next area, community education partnership, Portico Health Net. It's a new program introduced for our Latino community. It improves access to health insurance and medical care, and it supports families with gaps in services throughout the community. This is related to a new law that took an effect in January 2025. It allows these families to qualify through MenSure, and so we're quite happy to partner to have these services for our families. Next one, community education operations in partnership with facilities. There's been several facility upgrades, scoreboards at Nicolet, Burnsville, and Eagle Ridge. We are in the process of installing new bleachers at Burnsville High School. We've had increased signage at our tennis courts, and then also wireless microphones and updates in the Mirage Center. And then lastly, infrastructure and system innovations. With the expansion of preschool and our elementary families that access, we really wanted to enhance security, so it adds another layer of security before for school programming. And that concludes my update annual report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Up next, we will hear a community education data report from Allison Jordan, Community Education Supervisor, and Jason Sellers, Director of Community Education. Welcome.
Chair Worb, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board, especially welcome the new members of the board. We're really excited to be here this evening to share what is data that has only been collected by our district. I've been in education for almost 30 years, and I've been involved in summer programming for a lot of those years. And what I will tell you is that we've presented, Allison and I, some of this information at the Minnesota Community Education Association Fall Conference. We've also shared some of this data at the Area Learning Center Conference in the winter, and we had MDE in the room, and they have never seen data like this. And when we talk to other partners across other states, they've never collected data like this. And so Allison is going to acknowledge that we had one board member ask a particularly good question last fall, because we come every fall to present data. Growth data from our own internal assessments align to standards that we teach in summer. But I just want to thank, first and foremost, before we start, we have a large amount of people we hire every summer to make these programs happen. So first and foremost, from EAs to teachers, to custodians, to food service workers, to directors of operations and transportation, to technology, without them, we really don't have this summer program. This was new about seven years ago, we started this. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Allison Jordan, our Supervisor of Community Education.
Good evening, School Board Chair Worb, Dr. Battle, and board members, as well as individuals in the audience and people at home watching. I am Allison Jordan, the Supervisor of Community Education, and I have some exciting data to share tonight surrounding ALC Summer Programming, Voluntary Pre-K, and Kindergarten Jump Start that we're going to share. Tonight, we'll be covering several key topics. We presented to the school board last September, and a question was raised regarding year-over-year achievement data for ALC summer students and how they progressed during the school year. In response to that question, we've gathered the data, and we'll be sharing those results this evening. This request also sparked our curiosity about the impact of Voluntary Pre-K and the Summer Kindergarten Jump Start program, so we've included that data on those programs as well to add a more comprehensive picture of our students and their learning. Our two largest populations of summer learners are Hispanic, Latino students, and Black, African-American students. We believe that the Somali population is primarily represented in the Black, African-American demographic. The demographics of our summer learners closely reflect the district's overall student population. In the summer of 2021, we experienced a significant increase in enrollment, which we attribute to the return to in-person learning following the COVID-related disruptions. Since then, we've observed a gradual decline in enrollment among Black, African-American students. We think that trend is due to possibly families resuming international travel during the summer, which was largely paused in 2021. Additionally, special education students on average reflect approximately 25% of our total ALC summer school student population in any given summer. This is consistent with the percentage of K-12 students receiving special education support during the regular school year. To provide some context to the next set of slides, here is the longitudinal demographic data showing the number of students who attended summer school from 2021 through 2024. This cohort reflects students attending summer over summer for the four years. This slide represents overall AMATH data from fall 2021 through spring 2024. The average sample size for summer school students during this period was 761. The blue line represents students who attended summer school, while the orange line represents those who did not. The slide illustrates that students who participated in summer school demonstrated an average growth of 11 points compared to a five-point growth among students who did not attend, and the gap in learning is substantially reduced. The A reading data reveals a more significant difference in growth between students who attended summer school and those who did not. Students who participated in summer school showed an average of 34 points, while those who did not attend experienced only about a seven-point growth over the same time period. We isolated data by demographic. This is the Black, African-American data, and we believe, which includes our Somali families. Again, the blue line represents the students who attended summer school between 2021 and 2024, while the orange line shows those who did not. Students who participated in summer school demonstrated a 12-point growth compared to a seven-point growth among their peers who did not attend over the four-year period. This data indicates that within this demographic, summer school participants outperformed their non-participating peers by the end of year four. For the Black, African-American demographic, A reading data from 2021 to 2024 shows that students who attended summer school achieved a 32-point growth. The data suggests that students in this group are making meaningful progress and are closing the achievement gap compared to their peers who did not attend summer school. This slide focuses on the Hispanic student population in summer school. Students who participated in summer programming showed a 10-point growth, while those who did not attend showed a two-point growth. This data indicates that summer school participation contributed to closing the academic achievement gap within this demographic. This slide represents the A reading data for Hispanic students. Students who participated in summer programming demonstrated a 26-point growth, while those who did not attend show a nine-point growth. This data suggests that summer school played a key role in narrowing the academic achievement gap in reading for this group. This slide reflects data for all multilingual learners in District 191. Multilingual students who participate in summer programming showed a 31-point growth, while those who did not attend demonstrate only a three-point growth. This data highlights the summer school participation, helps multilingual learners close the achievement gap, and outperform their peers who do not attend. The A reading data follows similar trends to the AMATH data for multilingual students in the district. Multilingual students who participated in summer programming showed a 31-point growth, while those who did not attend demonstrated only a three-point growth. Again, this data reinforces the summer school participation helps multilingual learners close the achievement gap and outperform their peers who do not attend. Next, we will focus on our Voluntary Pre-K or VPK data and demographics. The data shared spans from 2022 to 2024, as districts were not required to collect demographic data on students before the 2022 school year. Similar to our summer school data, the two largest groups of students in VPK are Hispanic, Latino, and Black, African-American students. These demographics align closely with the overall student population in our district. We believe that the Somali population is primarily represented within the Black, African-American demographic. Additionally, we have seen an increase in the multilingual population within VPK, which reflects the broader trend in our district's student population. This key will be used to interpret the testing data presented in the following slides. This slide shows the percentage of VPK students from 2021 to 2024 who attended VPK and subsequently enrolled in ISD 191. Approximately seven out of every 10 students are choosing to continue their education with us, while others are opting for private parochial charter or homeschools. Kindergarten students are assessed using the Early Reading Assessment. The data here shows the early reading performance of VPK and non-VPK students from 2021 to 2024. In the 2021-2022 school year, 78% of VPK students scored in the "some" to "low-risk" categories compared to 74% of students who had no VPK experience. Looking across the years, we see the percentage of VPK students in the "low-to-some-risk" categories has consistently equaled or exceeded that of their peers who did not attend VPK. Students in grades one through three are assessed using A reading assessment. This data compares the performance of students who attended VPK to those who did not from the same timeframe, 2021 to 2024. In 2021 to 2022, 79% of VPK students scored in the "exceeds," "low-risk," or "some-risk" categories compared to 75% of non-VPK students. In 2022 to 2023, the percentages were 83% for VPK students versus 77% for non-VPK students. In the 2023-2024 school year, 90% compared to 68%. Across all three years, VPK students consistently outperformed their peers who did not participate in the program. Looking at MCA reading assessment results, we see a positive trend for VPK students over time. In 2021 to 22, 34% of VPK students met or exceeded standards compared to 35% of their non-VPK peers. By 2022-23, that number rose to 45% for VPK students, while non-VPK students remained at 35%. In 2023-24, 41% of VPK students met or exceeded expectations compared to just 25% of non-VPK students. These results suggest that students who attend VPK are demonstrating stronger reading outcomes over time. As we look ahead, we anticipate that the percentage of VPK students who meet or exceed benchmarks will continue to rise, especially with the implementation of HEGARDI in all VPK and pre-K classrooms, and targeted professional development aligned with the REDACT. Kindergarten Jump Start is a summer program designed to support students entering kindergarten in the fall. It serves both current VPK students and those without prior preschool experience, offering a full-day experience that mirrors a typical kindergarten schedule. The goal is to ease the transition into school by building familiarity and readiness. While the program was originally grant-funded, it is now self-sustaining through a combination of annual VPK ADM generation and Area Learning Center revenue generation. The demographics of the Kindergarten Jump Start participants closely align with those of our VPK students during the school year. The data presented here reflects the most recent cohort of students who participated in Kindergarten Jump Start during the summer of 2024. This analysis compares early reading and early math assessment results for Jump Start participants versus their kindergarten peers who did not attend the program. Approximately 25% of kindergarten students participated in the Jump Start program. In fall 2024, early reading assessments, 55% of Jump Start students were identified as low to some risk compared to 76% of their non-Jump Start peers. By winter of 2025, that percentage for Kindergarten Jump Start students increased to 68%, while non-Jump Start peers were at 74%. In early math, 74% of Jump Start students were in the "low-to-some-risk" range in the fall compared to 80% of their peers. Winter data showed a slight shift. 72% of Jump Start students remained in the "low-to-some-risk" category versus 81% of their non-Jump Start peers. Although the Jump Start participants are not outperforming their peers academically, the data suggests that the program supports a smoother academic transition into kindergarten. If we did not provide this programming for students, we believe the gaps in learning would be far larger. We also believe that this data might be a little skewed, because last summer, there were about 43 students who were brand-new to our system and had never done school before. So in any academic year, the number can be between 40 to 80 students who have not had a previous experience. In looking ahead, we will continue to watch this cohort of students and watch their instruction that they will continue to have for HEGARDI, especially this summer. At the end of Kindergarten Jump Start, we will review the data, and we will look at the early reading and early math data that will come forth, and begin to look at programmatic changes if they need to happen. From field trips and enrichment experiences to hiring practices and curriculum, we are continually working to improve outcomes for students and families in our community. Our vision, future-ready, community-strong, guides our planning as we prepare summer programming for the youth and families of District 191. As we wrap up the school year in transition into summer, here are a few key initiatives and plans we are implementing to support continued growth and engagement. As a final thank you, we'd like to recognize those individuals who helped gather this data, Director Oftedal and Dr. Lowe, Director Gorton and Drew Wookiee. We have been working since the fall to make sure this information was available to share with you. To our district teachers and support staff, as well as our summer teachers and staff, it takes all of us working together to make a difference for our students. Finally, a thank you to the district leadership and departments that make all of this happen. Without all of you and your support, we wouldn't be able to do all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members? Lots. Yes.
Just really a comment. I love this. I love this data, and it excites me. Just yesterday, I had a conversation with someone from Minnesota Reading Corps, where they have noticed second graders this year across the state struggling more than typical in second grade, and their theory is that so many of them missed pre-K during COVID. And you have the data to back that up, and I just thank you for pulling together this data. This is really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Saxi.
Thank you. I would just echo that and say double thanks owed to you and the whole team. I think thanks for this great presentation and the data there, but also thanks for the results. I think there's great visuals there that are great stories waiting to be told of the impact that you're making, which is very, very positive. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Mickelson.
Two things. First, I live Savage on the very edge of the district, and in a social media kind of group for Savage residents, somebody was asking about a couple of different options for one of their children, and one of the two options they asked about was VPK. And another parent, you know, from Savage was, "It's fantastic. You need to have your child go there." And it was really great. So I thought that was, and that post was just a couple of days ago, and I knew this was coming. I was like, "Oh, this is great." You know, perfect timing. You know, so it just reinforces that. I think it also just reinforces that, you know, the participants are some of the best cheerleaders as well, and so it's great when people are willing to share those kinds of experiences, you know, and the fact that they are having such a positive experience. And so it just speaks to the great job. I guess, I'm just curious, as far as for some of these programs, what we have as far as capacity, you know, are we kind of, do we have wait lists? Are we, you know, I mean, what kind of barriers do we have to be able to provide these kinds of results to more students, to more children?
Registration for all of our summer programs is currently still open.
Registration for all of our summer programs is currently still open and accepting participants. We haven't started placing anyone yet. A lot of the capacity depends upon the number of staff that we're able to hire. We model out what it looks like summer over summer. And so we have an idea of, we're going to need about this many sections of kindergarten, this many sections of first grade. We're constantly watching those numbers and making sure that we are able to accommodate with staff as many students as possible in the summer. We do sometimes have a wait list. And what usually happens is we're at capacity. And then within that first week, we start making phone calls home to families, asking questions about their child's enrollment in the summer program and if they are planning to attend. Once we get a yes or a no from that family, then we start to bring students off the waitlist as fast as we can. And we do that up until just shortly after the Fourth of July because we want to make sure we have time to collect the CLP, the Continuous Learning Plan data with the pre-test and the post-test, and show that growth and make the difference that we're able to make.
Thank you for all that because I'm sure it definitely takes time and effort. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Director Alt.
Thank you. I really love this presentation and the results. And I know the hard work that went into bringing the results, the outcomes to our students. The fact that the summer program is extremely representative of our community, of our school community makes such a difference in so many ways. And so I just, I'm just really, really proud of this data and thank you both for leading that program. One question. What steps are being taken to actively and intentionally recruit current VPK student families into the summer programming?
So, we made the decision to put VPK in its own building this summer in about December. There are a lot of benefits and a lot of reasons for doing that. And then once that decision was made, in early January, we started recruiting and pushing information via seesaw to families. At spring conferences, families received the information in a flyer. We are constantly getting it back out in front of families. The most recent kind of push in attendance was to district families who we know have incoming kindergarteners and those in the census data who also would fit that qualification. So maybe they don't have a student currently in the district, but we know there's a going-to-be kindergartner living at that address. And we did see an increase and a boost in enrollment or registration at that point. We spoke to building principals today about it, sharing the information in the lists. So there are lots and many ways that we are reaching the community and letting them know that this program exists and there are spots available.
The team also works really closely with the cultural liaisons and social workers, and they get the information quite early. Allison, Caitlin, and Cynthia meet with them to give them the information and push that information out. And then our own in-house Community Connections coordinators, as well as our whole Connections team, Engagement team, they also support Allison and the team in sending out that information many, many times.
Awesome. And appreciating as well that you are tracking the cohort because we do want to know, you know, how, we as a district want to know how our programs are impacting the littles once they're no longer little. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing this. And again, echoing everyone else, all the work that went into putting this together. I think anytime you can produce data to prove something is working, you should do it. But in my mind, I'm thinking, well, how do you make this shareable to the community? Get this out to where people see, I mean, there's lots of people out there I think would be very interested in this information, especially people who maybe are not sure if they want their kid to go to VPK. And seeing these types of results would be like, "Oh, yeah, for sure. I want my kid to go." But just as like a marketing tool or just where would this data, if we could get it somewhere? I don't know, put it in our dashboard or something where anybody that's interested, not just within our district, but anywhere that might be able to want to, I mean, is this something MDE is like asking for us to like give them? And they can put it out there for people too? Because I would think a lot of people would be interested in this. And then secondly, when you talk about the people that chose not to put their child in VPK, like when you already have them, you know, enrolled and they're starting and you were doing these comparisons, do you ever ask these people, "Well, why did you not put your child in VPK? What were the reasons? Like, why did you not enroll them? Were there barriers?" Like, I guess that's my question. Like, I know we would actively enroll or go out and recruit, but what, after the point where they're already, you know, in kindergarten and they didn't attend VPK, are we finding out why the, or, you know, they're in kindergarten and they didn't, we know they didn't go to VPK? Are we finding out why they didn't go to VPK?
I would say not formally. I would say anecdotally. In having conversations with parents and with teachers, some of it is they had other childcare options that they chose, whether that's in-home, whether that's grandma, grandpa, uncle. Some of it, you have to be eligible to be in VPK. And the eligibility requirements have changed this upcoming school year drastically. And then sometimes it is genuinely because, for whatever reason, even though we try to blanket as much as we can and canvass the community, they didn't hear about it, or they moved in late and didn't hear about it. We've never had a waiting list until last year for VPK during the school year. So we scheduled a meeting with MDE. And I said, you know, "Look, we have 343 kids that we could put into this program. We have like 330 spots. What can we do?" And they were kind enough to work with us and allocate more seats so that we could accommodate those additional students. And we were able to do that last year. And so we do have the ability to add. And there's a plan in place for next year around overflow, if that exists. But there's no, there's never been a formal questionnaire or a formal piece around that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a report about the 2026-2027 school calendar options, which will be presented by Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and Wendy Drugey, BEA President.
Chair Verbe, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. A fairly regular, at least typically annual event is for us to present school calendar options and an overview of our school calendar process, as well as the recommendations shared by our design team. So Wendy and I are here again for that. It's a bit unusual that we're presenting two options for the board to have conversations about tonight. So we'll share a little bit more about how that came to fruition. But first, especially for our new members, just to share a little bit more about how the sausage is made with the school calendars. So we have, fortunately, I mean, our team is excellent. They have a lot of diverse perspectives and opinions. So we are guided by some real strong policy and parameters, featured in Policy 602, also state statute, which policy requires us to follow. 170 student days, I won't read all the details to you, but just to know that those are out in front of you. And fortunately, Ms. Drugey, this is not even close to her first rodeo. She makes sure that we are always following those parameters as we're designing different options. The four days, the four workshop days that occur prior to the first day is a preference that's featured in our policy that we have. The one end-of-year professional day that's typically in conjunction with high school graduation. We must start after Labor Day unless there's special circumstances. And then that we have a minimum of four K-12 family conference days, two occurring in first semester and two occurring in the second semester. There's more preferences, that additional non-student days beyond conferences and professional development days include Labor Day, MLK Junior Day, Memorial Day, Thanksgiving, and the Friday. A lot of this is, I know we have parents of students on the board, so a lot of this is real familiar and typical for a lot of districts. You know, I think what we do really well is really try to get an array of perspectives and really authentically consider those perspectives as we meet in our design team. We met, I believe we met four times in the development of the 26-27 calendar, starting last school year. We have students, parents, administrators, teachers, social workers, liaisons. And then Wendy and I co-facilitate, so we try not to interject at any point our opinions, instead of just guide the process, make sure we're following the parameters, and make sure that we're moving forward in a really positive way. We try to really maintain our core values. We do inclusion and grounding activities at our design teams to remind us of what we believe. And so that can just help the various perspectives come together. And I'm happy to report we have really respectful dialogue and discussions, and all perspectives are considered. Ms. Drugey is going to share with you about this most recent design team process.
Good evening. It's great to see everyone. Chair Verbe, Superintendent Battle, and Director, yeah. So there were, I just did a quick count, 23 members on the committee. Some wear multiple hats. They're a parent and an administrator, or they're a teacher and a parent. And so when you look at the numbers of who was participating, it would be more than 23 because, like I said, some are wearing multiple hats. The design team members, like Chris said, we met at least four times. But there was also communication with the team in between the meetings. We would send out updated versions. As Chris, as Dr. Belmont told you tonight, we are bringing you two versions tonight, which is unusual for us. One of them starts before Labor Day and the other one starts after Labor Day because this year, or in the fall of '26, September 7th is the latest that Labor Day can fall. The last time it fell on September 7th was in 2020. And the time before that, it was in 2015. So we do have 11 possible calendar versions that were developed. And then we narrowed it down to two based on preferences and advice from the committee. So both of the options include what you see here. Our assessment days, parent-teacher conferences. It said in a previous slide that it's two days. It's actually, they actually do fall over three days. There are, the first day is a 12-hour day, the second day is an eight-hour day, and the third day is a three-and-three-quarter hour day. We need to have 14.75 hours of conferences in the fall and then 14.75 hours of conferences in the spring. So this is what they, they both included, all of these. So very consistent. And then this is where the two options differ. So option one, the first day of school falls after Labor Day. That's like a traditional, what we think of usually with our schools. Last day of school, if you notice there, is not until Thursday, June 10th, which is very late. It's the second week in June. And then option two, we do start before Labor Day. The first day of school is on Monday, August 31st. But then that would allow us to finish school on Thursday, June 3rd. What I would like to point out about option two is the first day for teachers is the last week in August. And the first week for students is the first week in September. And if you think about it, that's usually what we do, right? We usually have that first week for teachers, the last week in August, and the first week for students, the first week in September. It's just because Labor Day is so late and it's falling into the second week in September, that's why we're bringing you both versions. For option one, option one and option two actually both have a very high number of five-day weeks. That's been a major priority for the committee. Option one has 27 five-day weeks, and option two has 28 five-day weeks. And then both of these calendars fit the suggestion that quarter one and quarter four are the longest quarters. So quarter one for both of these versions is 44 days. And quarter four for both of these versions is 47 days.
Yeah, just one other piece of information that might be valuable to the discussion. Checking with Operations Director Dave Lake, there is a sizable project being sketched out for that summer of 2027 right now. Nicolat is in need of a roof replacement. So one of the stipulations for those special circumstances that's outlined in policy is a project that would total $400,000 or more to occur that summer. And he confirmed that this would be well above that. So, yeah, we're just curious, I know Superintendent Battle would like to hear the discussion prior to us bringing a formal recommendation on the 22nd.
So, thank you, Chair Verbe. As a board, I want to add a little bit more information. So the state law does allow districts to start before Labor Day. You have to have a financial amount, a minimum amount of construction. Also, I believe, was it 2015, if you have to help me, the legislature did allow the option to start before Labor Day. So the state law says districts should not start before Labor Day unless they have certain stipulations. So this current session, there has been discussion about the legislature offering that again. So you do not have to have the construction amounts. So there may be some legislative action that will allow the state for us without any construction. So I wanted to make that note. But it is unique, and your board policy asks, we need permission if we start before Labor Day. But we'll see what half-state, just like the cell phone policy, they may all just say, "Not allowed anywhere."
Thank you, Superintendent Battle.
Thank you. Was there anything else?
There are a couple other stipulations. I think they include partnering with neighboring school districts to also start. There's some additional language that we can look into if desired. So thank you. That concludes our report.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? Director Alt?
Of course I do. So to clarify, you're bringing this forward not simply as options, but because of the expectation of construction?
I think it was, it was fairly coincidental. We did want to do a little research if this is even within the realms of policy. But really, it was the discussions of the design team asking us to strongly consider bringing forth an option that had us starting before Labor Days.
And a couple more, a question and a comment. Wondering why, so let's see. The option one offers three days of school prior to winter break. Option two offers two days of school prior to winter break. And I'm wondering why choose, why you chose to recommend a two-day school week versus making November 3rd a day off for students and staff?
Which day?
November 3rd.
The remote learning day?
I should have shared that. It was in the slide, but I should have called it out. November 3rd is a school day, a remote learning day to help us with the elections at the sites.
Right. And that's why I'm asking why, like, why you wouldn't shift?
Officially, because I've got two Mondays in January versus one Monday in January. The compensate for those different hurt for the winter break differences.
Right. But couldn't you have given, made Election Day a day off for everybody rather than just a remote learning day?
It gets really challenging when you're trying to put 184 teacher workdays and 170 student days in between the first Tuesday after Labor Day and then ending on a Thursday so that graduation- and then ending on a Thursday, so that graduation can fall on a Friday. So when you, when you have these bookends, you get really restricted on moving one day. It just doesn't necessarily happen.
Shifts everything.
It has like a domino effect. And I didn't hear what Director Mickelson said, but as far as the change between, one option has winter break starting earlier than the other. It's because if we start the week before Labor Day, we start with a five-day week. If we start after Labor Day, we start with a four-day week. And so, the other thing is with the option, option two, where I made a note there that we would have a professional development day on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. That's because Martin Luther King Jr. Day falls right in between the two semesters. And putting in just an extra professional development day, to have an extra professional development day, it pushed it out so that we wouldn't be able to finish on a Thursday. And so, we did look at that. But the main reason is, when you start with a five versus a four, it carries you through all the way to the end.
That date is used later. Hour of one.
I guess, I guess my feeling is that option one would be least disruptive to staff and families.
Director Saxey?
Thank you. I was just curious of beyond those participating in the actual process, if we have large-scale data from parents on how they would feel about a pre-Labor Day? I think it's just, it shouldn't be, but it's sort of just shocking to see August 28th as a start. I guess, and I've never, as a student in the late 1900s, or as a modern parent, experienced school starting before Labor Day. So I think seeing an August 28th, you'd be like, whoa, that's, that's very different.
But what I would go back to is, that's normally like about the time that teachers would start is that last week in August. And the other thing is, going till the second week in June is really hard. Especially June 10th. And the teachers that we talked to were like, if we, if we could get out earlier, you know. Because it's hard for students to learn that second week in June. It's, it gets to be, it feels like a very long school year. And now I'm feeling really old that you said you went to school in the late 1900s.
I had to test myself, like, I did too, but that's not that long ago.
And appreciate the question, Director Saxey, to just answer it completely. No, we didn't poll all parents beyond what our design team people informally gathered.
So just to comment on that. So, it might be helpful to formally, but we find our families take vacations throughout the school. It's not necessarily tied to winter break sometimes, the summer, yeah. So, it's really to gauge, and, but we do hear from some students about if you're in school later, the opportunity to not work at these summer jobs. Yeah, so there's really individual perspectives. And then also our seniors who will report to armed services right away. And then summer college bridge program starting in June, because they get out in May. So that's part of the student perspective I heard over the years about going later in June. So when you get into that second week, third week, and people are accustomed to getting out earlier, there has been feedback about that.
So when you, you look at the calendar, the first day of school would be the 31st for grades 2 through 12. Second first day of school for grades K and 1. So, I mean technically, it's the 31st. Yes, yeah, for option two. Option two, yep, that's what I'm talking. And when, you know, to your point, I mean, what we're used to starting when Labor Day falls on the normal time, the normal day, I feel like it's more like disruptive for people to go so far into June before getting out of school. I just feel like it's very, like, almost cutting into their summer break. I mean, I know it's a, it's a foreign concept for people to start thinking about going back to school before Labor Day, but there are states that already do this. It's not such a, you know, abnormal thing in other states. I don't, I mean, it wouldn't be any different than if you were already in school, and then you, you have your holiday then still. You still have Labor Day to celebrate, you just would already have started school.
I'm sorry.
Yes, you can start.
I, sometimes I forget the order of things. But it just kind of, I was, if, if Labor Day was on September 1st or September 2nd, we'd be going to school, it would be, it's like a three-day difference, right? You know, does that make sense? What I'm noticing, as a parent, I'm like, oh, that sounds terrible. I don't want to go to school that early. But as somebody in the school building, seeing, like, we're done. Everybody, everyone in the building is already done, and it's only the beginning of May. Keeping them further into June does sound terrible as well. So for, you know, just a thought that maybe it's not so bad.
The other thing is, students have had their summer break, and I think a lot of parents are ready for their children to go back, and I think to capitalize on that week and get a jumpstart. And I, I will double-check on this, but I am fairly certain both Edina and 196 start before Labor Day. I will check.
And I was going to say, I think there are, there are districts up north.
Some start earlier in August because of all the possible snow days, which was ameliorated with remote. But typically, yeah, they start middle of August. And so it varies.
So we have been trying to see who has finished this calendar yet. And of my local president friends, the only two that I know that are done yet are St. Paul and Richfield. And so, we are trying to monitor that to see who's getting their calendars done. Because you always want to steal a good idea, right? And so, we've been working on that.
Of course, state fair is going to have trouble getting their kids working at those food places.
To Wendy's point, the policy calls for us to have it finalized by November, so technically, we have some time.
And is this like a, you think, just, just this one time because it's so late? And, but not like a, we're going to start a trend now, always going back the last week in August?
No, we're really just looking at it because this is the latest Labor Day can possibly fall.
Yeah.
I would, I would say, my concern is making a decision in a vacuum. If we are able to do some sort of survey of students and families and staff, because this, granted, it's a one-time thing, right? We don't know what the reaction might be, or what kind of feedback we might be getting. Is it going to make a difference with attendance? That's the other thing. I, I mean, completely, completely open, but I'm concerned about, to your point, Director Mickelson, you know, state fair, family traditions with summer, et cetera. If it's not going to be that big of an impact on them, then.
I mean, I think, hopefully, if we can, if the survey can share some of the pros, cons, benefits of, you know, this is why we would really want it, some of the reasons that you've presented here that, you know, I think a lot of people won't be aware of or really be thinking of. You know, it could probably be helpful for them to make an informed vote or decision in when they're sharing their opinion.
We do have a social worker that served on the committee, and she helped pull data for us on what are student days with low attendance. And so, we can see if we can go back to what happened in, like I said, the last time Labor Day fell this late was in the 2020, 2021 school year, and in the 2015, 2016 school year. And so we can see if we can get some data to see what that last week of June is like.
That too, yeah.
I'd be curious if there was any other school districts that have surveyed this before about starting before Labor Day? If that was a tool that another district might have used? And how did that, how did that play out?
Especially ones that are more demographically like ours, because I know, and, you know, when I was growing up, when there was a proposal with Labor Days and everything, because, you know, small town, lots of farm families and everything in the district, I was like, oh no, you know, that was not going to fly. But, you know, we have a very different, yeah, student body as far as, you know, things like the state fair.
We did at one point, and I hope this is okay, Dr. Belmont, we did investigate if we could still keep maybe a four-day weekend for Labor Day weekend. Like, that might soften it a little bit. But then we would need to see where that other day is going to have to fall. And so, it's my 10th year of doing these calendars, and if anyone out there would like to start taking this over, that would be great.
She's committed.
So we are, you know, we can look at that also. If that, if we think that that would soften it a little bit, if they get a four-day weekend, you know, and then maybe it doesn't feel like such a hard piece of starting before Labor Day, if that makes sense.
So in those other years, did we still start after Labor Day?
Yes, we have not started ever before Labor Day.
That's why we're bringing two.
Okay. So, and there was, do you, but can you say there was challenges then to having that later, going later into June?
Yes. It's, it's really hard to go that late. Other schools are getting out, and it just gets to be a really long school year for the students at that point. Because if you think about it, you have your spring break, and then you don't have any other days off until Memorial Day.
The end of the quarter.
And then you've got another two, one to two weeks after that. And it just gets to be a really long stretch at the end of the year.
Okay.
Just can I verify? We had a little side conversation. The, the dates, the numbers in red, those are end of quarter?
Correct.
Okay, good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep. At this time, I would like to share an update on our superintendent search. Last Monday, April 28th, the ISD 191 School Board held a special meeting to review finalists and select who would be selected for first-round interviews. Four candidates were selected. We also discussed the superintendent interview process and finalized interview questions. On Thursday, May 1st, first-round interviews were held, and three finalists were invited back for second-round interviews to be conducted on May 7th. Second-round interviews were held last night, and the board unanimously voted to offer the superintendent position to Dr. Latonya Daniels, which she accepted. We are currently in negotiations surrounding her contract to be finalized and approved at the May 22 meeting. And that concludes my report. Next, we will receive a report from Shemaz?
Shemaz.
Shemaz, sorry. Our student board representative.
Okay, I think it's on. So, what I have for the May student report, is I'm going to start with the affinity groups and the extracurriculars. For the DIBC Committee, Diversity, Inclusion, Belonging Committee, our seniors and junior leaders are brainstorming ways to increase attendance during after-school meetings, finding ways for event, for making events more student-led, along with further preparation for the next year and our next upcoming seniors. Our Asian Student Association Board has elected their new 25-26 ASA Board. They also have their upcoming AAPI show in the further preparations. The show will be on May 23rd in the Marass Center during 7th hour, and an evening show at 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. For theater, the opening night for Percy Jackson is tonight, and leading up to the 8th, for, and then on the 15th through the 17th as well. As for choir, due to low enrollment, freshman choir and freestyle choir isn't able to be offered. The choir students aren't particularly happy about this, and I've made a petition to stop it because there are two, there are two very fundamental foundations of choir. Freestyle does most of the fundraising, but also helps students find their style of music, and freshman choir teaches all the basics. As for athletics, Messiah Betis has been granted this year's Athena Award. She broke records of former Hall of Famer Tori Dixon. She was a finalist for the Minnesota Gatorade Player of the Year, plus Miss Bayden Award, among other awards as well. For badminton, badminton has their state tournament plus individual state coming up next week from the 12th to the 15th, soon wrapping up their season. For track and field, Hazel Kubasak, a senior, broke the track and field school record for high jump, going from 10-1 in 2003 to 10-3 this year. Carla Lamont, a junior, is ranking number two in the state, and Caleb Kamara is ranking number six or seven in the state. And for other sports, as to my knowledge, all other spring sports are running smoothly and going about their schedules as usual. Other things going on at BHS for prom, prom has passed and was held on May 20, on May 3rd at the Landmark Center in St. Paul. Many students had a great time and enjoyed their evening with their peers. For Culture Week, it was from April 28th till May 3rd. Throughout the week, students got to participate in themed days to dress up, eat different foods from different cultures, and each affinity group dedicated a meaning each day after school. For Decision Day, it was on May 1st. It was held in the Career Center. There was chocolate and vanilla cake during the lunches for seniors to eat after taking pictures with their friends, holding pennants, or showing off their college merch. The Inverhills graduation was today, on May 8th. The class of 25 Associates of Arts students will participate in the Inverhills Community College graduation earlier today at 3:00 p.m. And would have had pictures in their grad outfits with Dr. Battle and Mr. Belmont beforehand. The Avid graduation was earlier this week, on May 6th. It was the Avid Senior Graduation slash Celebration. It was held at 6:00 p.m. at the high school in E-Commons, honoring and recognizing seniors for their hard work. Seniors were given their Avid stoles, and two students, myself and Musion Badi, gave speeches as voted by their classes. And that concludes my report.
Do board members have any questions or comments? Thank you, Shemaz. Now we will receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Verbe, and members of the board. We have reached the point of our school year when we are celebrating so many achievements and milestones. There are three that I want to share with you in the community tonight. First, on Wednesday, Eagle Ridge Middle School officially became an Avid demonstration school. Avid is a college readiness program that teaches skills and strategies to help students succeed now and in the future, in their future academic work. Becoming a demonstration school means that Eagle Ridge has shown that it meets or exceeds Avid's program standards, and puts it in the top 5% of schools nationwide using Avid. Of course, students at all of our secondary schools benefit from strong Avid programs. And that brings me to my second celebration. As Shemaz mentioned, on Tuesday, Burnsville High School held its annual ceremony to recognize and honor seniors in the Avid program. These are students who have taken the Avid elective class and have put in a tremendous amount of work to learn college readiness skills, graduate high school, and make a plan for continuing their education. The students just being with pride every year at this ceremony, and they absolutely deserve it. I want to express my sincere appreciation to all of the Avid teachers and coordinators for their work in providing this key academic and social supports that students need to thrive. And last, but not definitely, not least, as Shemaz mentioned, this afternoon, 48 Burnsville High School students graduated from High School students graduated from Inver Hills Community College with their Associate of Arts degree. It's our first class of AA pathway students. I am so impressed with these students and with our staff members, especially Becky Ackerson, Sarah Noble, and Kathy Funston, for making this program and partnership a reality. It is such an example of our pathways' approach through partnership, we're providing barrier-free and meaningful opportunities for our students. I couldn't be more proud. And I'd like to thank the previous board members and this board for continuing to support the Associate of Arts degree. It was a new program in my tenure, and then, once the board gave its approval, I cannot thank staff enough for implementing this program. And our program is unique in the state of Minnesota. All of the courses our students need for the AA degree, they can take at our Burnsville High School. They do not have to leave campus, which allows them to participate in extracurricular activities, reduces that travel time, and spend that senior year with their peers. So, congratulations to all of our amazing 191 students and staff members who helped to make these three celebrations that I mentioned happen. Thank you. That ends my report.
Do board members have any questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Battle. Lastly, we will receive reports from board members. Do any board members wish to share a report? Just a reminder that we will have committee and school reports on our agenda at the second meeting in May. Oh, Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Worb. Yes, recently, I attended the first of many year-end celebrations, including the celebration of our graduating Indigenous students and Avid graduation. Both events were emotional reminders of how special and important it is to celebrate our graduates and their lived experience here in 191. Last weekend, and actually, I was joined by Director Anderson at the, at the Avid celebration this week. And, let's see, in attendance at the Pow Wow, we had Chair Worb, Director Anderson, and Director Mickelson. It was, and Dr. Battle. And the South of the River Pow Wow is always just a wonderful event, very warm and very welcoming, and a wonderful opportunity to celebrate our families, as well as graduating seniors from the area. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. We will now move to the business portion of our meeting. We will start by approving the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that, that item will be moved for a separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent items? Okay. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Saxi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, we are being asked to adopt a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of probationary certified personnel at the close of the 2024-2025 school year. Presenting the resolution this evening is Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Chair Worb, Dr. Battle, members of the board. I'm bringing to you a recommendation to adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of School District 191 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A dot 40, that the teaching contracts of the following licensed probationary teachers in Independent School District 191 be terminated at the end of the 24-25 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notices sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of their contract as provided by law.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution just presented? Moved by Director Mickelson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? Having been moved and seconded, this resolution will require a roll call vote. So, in just a second, I will ask Sarah to call the roll, and when she calls your name, please respond with an aye if you are in favor of the resolution, or nay if you are opposed. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Mickelson?
Aye.
Director Alt?
Aye.
Chair Worb?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Saxi?
Aye.
This resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Up next on our agenda is a closed session as permitted by Minnesota Statute, Section 13D dot 03, to discuss labor negotiation strategy. Is there a motion to close the meeting at this time to discuss labor negotiations strategies?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Mickelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The time is now 7:45, and we will move to the HR conference room to discuss labor negotiation strategy. Once the closed session is finished, we will return to this room and the dais to begin
To discuss studying our Board of Education goals for 2025, 2026. You will find a copy of last year's goals in the board packet to use as a launching point for this discussion. Would anyone like to kick things off with thoughts or questions? And to be completely honest, I have not had a chance to even review this. So I will be looking at it and coming up with my own fresh ideas as I review it right So I'm for new board members. We do this every year at this time. It's basically, you know, MSBA recommends that the board has goals that we set each year for ourselves. And I'm just bringing it up.
And sometimes what we do, you know, we'll look at the strategic roadmap, decide are these the same areas that we want to cover if including the goals? Do we, if we want to keep all or some of them? Do we keep the, you know, the activities, the expectations, the same beneath? Do we change them? All that good stuff.
Well, okay, so this just popped in my head. Because of us bringing on a new superintendent, I know that I think one of the things that we will probably want to add is creating a new relationship with the new superintendent and just kind of, I'm trying to think of the right word. Establish that relationship with the board and with her and just get, you know, some groundwork laid down about, you know, all of us being on, you know, the same page and just, you know, supporting her and.
Transition plans, ongoing plans, expectation goals.
Right, right, right.
So we really would look at goal four.
Right. Kind of the most obvious replacement opportunity with onboarding a new super.
Can I ask a quick question first, though? When do you review these goals to give yourself, give ourselves a progress monitor, so to speak, if we're meeting them?
Yeah, so we do an evaluation. We have like a, the board evaluates itself.
Right.
We do a board evaluate, we self-evaluate our, you know, evaluate our self. And then we have like, you know, our own discussion surrounding that. It just kind of helps us to kind of take a temperature on where we're at as a board. And, you know, with these goals in mind to, are we, you know, are we meeting these goals? Are we, are we where we want to be as a board? Are there things we want to work on? How do we feel like we work together as a board? You know, just different things. And we've had, we have MSBA come in and do a session with us to.
When does that happen?
The fall.
In the fall. Okay, thank you.
So, please.
I mean, goal one is like never ending. It's kind of, I could just stay there forever, right?
Yes.
The only thing that might change might be the bullet points if there's something new that we might want to do.
Yeah.
Or add.
I wonder, though, if adding our commitment to coordinate, or coordinating is not the right word, working with AIPAC, I mean, in any other group, but they're the ones who challenge us.
It would be the parent groups. Yeah, we've got the Somali family group, we've got the Spanish speaking group, we've got the special ed group, we've got, I mean, yeah, that's a great one.
We haven't had like a CPSS work session in a while.
Retreat, yeah.
Retreat. I think we should add one or.
We're technically due.
Yeah.
And we usually have a, we historically would have a retreat in August or September. Since we're a new board, we can decide, you know, how many we think we want or need and when. And given new superintendent, is August ideal?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something they participate in with us?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Yeah, the superintendent is always with us.
Yes.
Always.
That's why she's getting rid of us.
But yeah, I think a retreat is a good idea. Or two.
Or two.
And it could be CPSS, which I know. The other thing is board building. That's another traditional retreat that the board does when we're new like this. What that looks like, we can determine or check in with MSBA on.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So we'll probably want to just tweak this one a little.
Which one?
Goal one.
So.
Just add.
So keeping bullet one and bullet two. Facilit.
Members of the district or the measures of progress.
Under members of.
Oh, members of the district, keeping the first two bullet points there, I think is, what do you guys?
Yep.
And then under measures of progress. What do you guys think?
Well, so under the members of the, okay, work to understand.
Yeah, the community representatives kind of includes those parent groups.
Have something more specific about who those other.
I think we'd want to be specific. And I think quite honestly, receiving information from cultural liaisons, we've never had that.
No.
No.
They don't do any reporting to us.
They do not. No, we have the school reports come where there might be a cultural liaison, there might be a parent, some students, depending on what the principal decides. Would it be we will receive information from the family groups or will we engage with the family groups? I don't know. And Dr. Battle, your thoughts?
So previous you mentioned four groups. Our Spanish.
Spanish, Somali.
Somali, special ed.
AIPAC.
And AIPAC. So that's a good question. Do you want to engage with them or?
I mean.
Just hit, yeah.
Are we receiving a report or are we?
For this, right.
I.
Mm-hmm.
It, maybe it depends on what their reports say, right? So when AIPAC comes and says, you know, they're not just reporting, they're saying we have these asks of you and we say, okay, we want to work on these things, then that's engagement and not just hearing a report. So I think engage would be a better word.
Engage based on the report.
Makes it clear that it's in this setting.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah. That's, that was kind of what. That's, that was kind of what.
Yeah, we don't have to like go to their meetings.
Yeah.
Because they probably don't want us there, but.
They always welcome you. Sarah, you want to read back just so we, she's clear.
I'm looking for the word for the community groups. Do we want to list them? Do we want to say?
Or, or just keep.
Parent advisory committees of various culture. I could just name them.
Parent groups.
Board members will engage with, how about district representative, district cultural, parent.
Parent groups.
Family groups.
Family groups.
Parents and family groups.
Yeah.
So this would be a third bullet? Or are we replacing this bullet with the school reports? Or keeping school reports and just taking out the first sentence?
Yeah.
Okay, so second bullet, I'm removing the first sentence. So school reports will feature examples of school culture as well as celebrations of this culture within the school community. And then, I'm sorry, a third bullet or, yeah, third bullet, which will be board members will engage with the district's cultural, parent and family groups. Okay. And I'll obviously send this back out to you guys. Okay, I got it.
Found it, some more too. Is, are these goals, what we have here, I mean, obviously they're aligning with our strategic plan. Was there any guidance from MSBA on making them or this is just?
That we do, that we do and that we do it in this way.
Okay. But not the actual content?
Not the actual, no, yeah.
They did say, as you started off, it should be aligned to your strategic plan. That was the main.
It should make sense.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So goal two. Pathways the focus, is there anything else that we might want to change to? Is there something we might want to add?
Given what we heard tonight, seems like there's more we might want to specify beyond pathways there.
Yeah, VPK and summer school.
Associate degrees.
Yeah.
Maybe after, it says including but not limited to pathways. Did you want to list some specific ones? More, that's what I'm here, kind of, yeah.
Possibly, I think the bullet points below are very much more centered on, so it says that above like it's not limited to pathways, but then all the bullet points are.
Pathways, yeah.
So measures of progress we could update is what you're saying, Tyler? Well, we're still working on profile of a learner, so we would want to keep that. And someone mentioned AA degree.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, so under the receiving dashboard reports, I mean, is that what we're calling like getting updates on the AA program, the, having program, the voluntary pre-K, the summer school, right?
So we have, yeah, so we have a dashboard and then from that, Dr. Battle and her team kind of. They're not explicitly called dashboard reports, but yes.
Yeah, so I get, feel like in there is where we'd want to list all of the things we want to hear from.
So I don't, we don't have on our dashboard the metrics of success, the, the summer data, VPK. So that's a consideration. The board formally approved those metrics, that may be where you add that one.
Okay.
Yeah, so the dashboard would include, then you would definitely get that. And then it would be visible to everybody if you added that one. So I just wanted to connect those dots for you based on the previous conversation earlier tonight.
I mean, that information, like, and you go on Zillow and see like our score based on like MCA or whatever, you know, like, and then you're like, but wait, I want you to show this on Zillow. You know what I mean? Like, look how much improvement we're making. I don't know, anyway.
So would it be another bullet point because the VPK and summer are not technically in the dashboard? The AA program was something we had discussed. It is kind, it is a pathway, but if we feel explicitly that we want to call it out.
Well, it's unique because.
Maybe this is the opportunity to review that dashboard. We do have three new board members that weren't a part of the approval.
Yep.
Maybe that's one of the goals that.
Yes.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Can, is that.
To remove some things.
Is that a part of the goal for the top part? The members of the board will reevaluate the information that goes into the dashboard? Because is that something we should be regularly evaluating if we are adding new, new programming?
Or have the, like, consider, consider reviewing the dashboard just as a, you know, a bookmark in, in here for reference.
So if I'm hearing correctly, it would be reviewing and consider reviewing the dashboard? Would I add that to that second bullet where it's have a deeper understanding how K pathways is reflected in our district, especially within our elementary and middle schools? As what, like, should I add as well as evaluation of dashboard, school dashboard reports? Or do you want that as a separate?
I mean, it seems like it would be a separate.
Yeah, I think, I feel like it would be too.
Evaluate.
Because I don't even think, Sarah, do you know about the dashboard? You're new to it.
That's the one we use for the mapping out.
Metrics of success, yeah.
I mean, they do a whole calendar for the year, so I usually work off that.
Right, oh, yeah, that's right.
So I try to know what's on there. So it would probably be helpful because they look at that. Should it, do you want to put it, you had mentioned consider, or should I just put evaluate?
Periodically evaluate.
Yeah, there you go, periodically. Dashboard progress reports?
With the dashboard content itself.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, dashboard content. All right, I have evaluate periodically dashboard content and progress reports or just content period? Because there is a schedule sort of that, does those reports roll out and maybe there's?
The reports are in the bullets below too.
Oh, yeah, this is the last one, quarterly reports.
Well, for example, there, I'm so sorry, I was just thinking of that dashboard report that we do use or that's kind of in play. It's the comprehensive in curriculum, it's the early read. So there are these kinds of specific, and Read Act was added last year. So again, that would be a great question, is that continuing or will that be a sep, you know, separate? So that's, this one was called out because it was a new one last year, but it is on that same sheet now in terms of tracking.
So the Read Act, they delayed the launch for secondary. We were supposed to start that next year. So we can still do a quarterly report, but it'll probably be on how the elementary, I don't know, that's what we have to discuss because we were expecting the reports would be on the launch of the secondary.
But I mean, it makes sense to keep it because we're not done yet.
Right, yeah. So I wouldn't suggest changing that. The content may be a little different than what we had this year because it was all about the launch and the PD days in. They'll be fully implementing next year, elementary and special education teachers. So we're still waiting from MDE about what the pause means and the expectations.
State has a.
Okay.
Would you like me to list out the dashboard reports that are on the schedule for your board reports on this document? No? Okay.
Because if we change them then.
She got a comment.
But separately, though, we're going to like review what's on the dashboard.
Okay, yeah.
Are we looking at goal three now?
I am.
No, I was thinking about something, but I was like, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out if, if I should put it out there or not. I don't know. Attendance?
That might be a dashboard report.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That once you review, yeah.
So it's already covered?
It's already there.
It's already there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But we don't, I mean, do we? I know we receive reports on what they're doing to improve attendance, but when was the last time we received like a report on attendance?
Was it a month ago?
Okay, so we're, I know when I saw that we're going to get an update.
When they first did the report to the legislature, so how many months was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh-huh. And then they're getting ready to do it now because they have to report back to the legislature.
Right, and I know that's coming up. I know it's coming up.
Yep.
Is that report going to include just overall general data on attendance? It will?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. That was my thought.
Is there a, is there a survey that goes out to families on their opinion of the, what's the word I'm looking for? Productivity, that's not the word I want, but of the board? Like, I mean, there's district. Are we ever included, is the board ever included in those questions?
Depending on who's running the report.
Yeah, the survey, I don't know, Alan, if he wants to come in.
Didn't we just get one this week?
Be specific, there are questions about the board on our annual survey.
For the, we definitely.
Okay, he can answer, yeah.
I love it here.
The man behind the curtain.
Yeah, there is a question about board and administration, I think is the, is the wording in it, and I was going to pull it up right now, but I don't think I need to. But there is one about are families informed and then does the board and administration engage the community in decision-making? Those are the two kind of main ones.
Okay. And so when we say, when we talk about these, we're including ourselves in these surveys that were, sorry, anyway.
The third bullet, under measures of progress, is that the one you refer to?
Yeah.
Okay. Or just kind of all of them? I'm just asking specifically.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I was looking at the bullet point, the third bullet point and thinking like, it's not just the voices heard on the performance of the district itself, but specifically us. I was just curious if we were included in that because I couldn't remember. We fill out a lot of surveys.
I like what goal three does for us.
Uh-huh.
Changes to goal three?
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to articulate how I want to say this. I'm, I'm just thinking about the situation with Sutrail. And when we're talking about identifying any gaps, and I know there's been conversations about people not feeling like voices were heard and not, you know, having things explained or whatever, I mean, I know some of it's situational, but just if there's anything we can do to like, I mean, because we might have another situation where we're selling a building.
We would add community to that bullet.
To which bullet? Sorry.
The second bullet point. Board members will.
How families.
Information is getting to our families, students, staff and community.
Yeah. We're just learning how the information gets out or are we claiming how it gets put out?
Well, that's, comes out in our questions during board meetings.
Okay.
Right, this is kind of, I sometimes use this as kind of a reminder to ground myself in terms of, okay, what is it that I need to make sure I'm doing, right?
Yeah.
And, and, and in officers, you know, making sure that we're bringing forward information that ties back to this too.
And you had two examples from earlier. Director Sati, where did I go again? Saxi. And Chair Wu, you asked about the input from families on the calendar. So that's related to book one.
Yeah.
You ensure, so.
Nice job.
Good, grounded, it reminds you, remind doing that. So you two kind of showed that. My doing that, so you two kind of showed that tonight. Yep, not just budgeting, it's other, yep.
Okay, so.
So we're leaving that as as well, except for that one. Adding community.
End community.
On the second. Second bullet under measures of progress, I added end community after staff. All right, so then.
Um, and then for number four, so we agree that we will update that to and we could call it. I feel like we should call it something else.
Onboarding.
Onboarding. Onboarding the new superintendent.
But it's governance and onboarding.
Yes.
We need to find out if, you know, Dr. D likes tea.
Or it could be donuts with Dr. D.
She likes tea.
It could be anything that starts with a D though.
Yeah.
It could be donuts, it could be.
So just a little bit, I have to tell you, the inspiration for that was Dr. Bernadette Johnson from Minneapolis Public Schools when I worked for her. She had soup with the soup.
I like that.
And they served soup instead of tea. At local restaurants and they had soup.
Sure.
That's funny. And bread.
Just to make sure I captured, did I hear that we're adding onboarding to goal four?
Or replacing? Replacing.
Replacing which word?
All of it. Providing, it says providing appropriate governance and guidance to Dr. Battle and her team. It's going to be onboarding the new superintendent.
I think we replace guidance. We still have to provide appropriate governance.
I mean, this is a whole year, right? These goals go for a whole year.
And I think underneath something about team building, new team, something like that.
Yep.
Because it's all of us.
Yep, yep. Um.
But I think you're right, Tyler, provide appropriate.
I feel like we should, I mean, I would say put goal fours onboarding the new superintendent and then underneath it put provide appropriate governance and guidance um to uh the new superintendent.
Delete facilitate team building.
Yes, yeah.
That's, that works.
Okay, just to quickly recap that, it was goal four will be provide onboarding to, are we, will we say new superintendent or should I list Dr.?
Doctor.
Dr. Daniels. Dr. Daniels. And her team. And then where would you like to add in that language? All ISD one, board members will.
Um. Provide appropriate governance and guidance. Um.
Delete facilitate team building.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then maybe, yeah. In addition to the, you know, board members will understand and.
So it'll be the first part of the sentence. Will live up to the governance role of the Board of Education in providing, so taking out supervising. I mean, don't we still have to do that?
Oh, yeah, well.
All board members will understand and live up to the governance role of the Board of Education in supervising, providing support and guidance to the superintendent. I think that stays the same.
Yeah.
It is what it, I mean.
I mean, that's literally our whole job.
Right.
Okay.
And then I was, but then I would say at the end, I would say while providing appropriate governance and guidance. I think we're, because we were trying to fit in the uh, the governance and guidance somewhere is what we were intending to do there. So.
I mean, it's in that sentence.
Oh, it is?
Live up to the governance role. Uh, and then providing support and guidance.
Oh, okay, so then we don't need to add it. Okay, never mind.
You mean to provide appropriate governance and guidance.
Yes.
Down into just kind of the paragraph.
Okay, so it's there. Okay.
But just keep kind of inserting.
Okay, no, we're good. That's good.
I'm going to read back one more time. Yeah, so goal four, provide appropriate governance and onboarding to Dr. Daniels and her team. And then we're going to keep that whole paragraph underneath that. That's not changing.
No, it just says, it should say provide onboarding of Dr. Daniels and her team.
Maybe support onboarding?
Support on.
Support onboarding, yeah.
Yeah.
Dr. Daniels and her team.
Because there's a lot that she's gonna.
Uh huh.
Okay, so the first, first section of that first part of the goals will go away and will be support onboarding of Dr. Daniels and her team.
Yep.
And then keeping this paragraph underneath the same.
But Rachel also had.
The facilitating team building.
Right, but then in between pretty much that new title and the all ISD 191 board, in between that, you know, in the paragraph, it will be facilitating, what, what was it that it said?
While facilitating team building.
Yeah.
I just didn't catch where while facilitating.
After her team in the first line.
Okay, and her team comma while facilitating team.
Building.
Team building, okay. Got it.
And in the fourth bullet, change Dr. Battle to Dr. Daniel.
Um, I would just say to modify these things to indicate um, let's see. Um, because all these things are going to be like new to her, so um. I would say, I'm trying to, I know there's like words in my head, I'm just trying to put them together. Um. Um. Set expectations with Dr. Daniels about communication protocols and other items.
Other than clarify.
Oh, because that is. Yeah, set them.
So board members will work with Dr. Daniels?
No, no, under the bullet points.
Members of the third.
Of the district.
It says clarify.
Oh, I see, I was up, I was moved. There's another clarify. Okay, okay, so we're on the third bullet, it will be set expectations.
With Dr. Daniels, yep.
Yes. Or create expectations because it's not, I mean, well, yes, that's fine, yes, that's fine.
You can ask ChatGPT which one it likes more.
Create would be a bit more of a collaborative word than set.
Okay, I have to tell you, the parameters of the calendar. I told Wendy, give it to ChatGPT and see what comes out. Not logical, cannot do it.
Somebody show me how to co-pilot. You could ask it anything and it'll answer.
Put the calendar, the parameters, the dates and see what comes out.
How about support um, Dr. Daniel's introduction to the school, the the school and the community at large?
Yeah, that is something that we're going to do. That's in the we will.
That is, that is we will, the Board of Education will, yes, Board of Educat-, yeah, working under the details.
Yep. Um, so fourth bullet, support Dr. Battle or Dr. Daniels. How many times was that? Support Dr. Daniels, I missed the key word, but to school community.
Introduction to school, our schools, oh, well, the school community, just district community. The district and the community at large.
Okay.
Um, and I think we just can remove the bottom bullet.
Under measures of progress?
Mm hmm.
Well, that's the one we changed to set expectations.
No, there's, nope.
There's the second.
Yeah, there's two.
Oh, God, that's so.
Yeah, we're under um. So there's.
Yeah, because how do we, how do we measure the progress of setting those expectations or creating, I'm sorry, creating those current communications? And then how do we measure it?
Well.
We have the retreat with MSBA.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. So I have a superintendent to superintendent transition. And I thought there was an MSBA board transition for a new superintendent.
Yeah, we have a retreat in the fall.
Yeah, that's. What I need to do.
Transition retreat.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm so confused, okay. Got it. So for that first bullet, under measures of progress, board members will participate in a transition retreat with MSBA? Or just with transition retreat?
Maybe one or more.
One, yeah.
One or more, okay.
Keep it open.
So I would take out the one or more, do you want to keep facilitated in there? One or more facilitated transition retreats, just adding the word transition up there? Okay.
I would say you could probably delete the rest of it because they're they, the retreats are what they are.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Wouldn't necessarily be about governance.
Yeah.
So that new bullet will read, board members will participate in one or more facilitated transition retreats. Yes. Okay.
I don't think we need the last goal.
I mean, don't we though?
You've got name changing, long term facilities.
Based on whatever we create up.
Okay, so we want to change it, okay. All right, so we'll change it from tech levy to.
Wait, where are we?
Yeah.
Ah, she said goal five.
Oh, I thought you're still in the.
I thought we were still doing our measures of progress.
Yeah.
Just announce what you're talking about.
I'm sorry, I'm, I.
You're like Rachel in her nodding and come on.
It's like delete goal five. You've got big projects.
Do we need to label these bullet points like A, B, C, D?
Yeah, let's do that, please.
That would be a lot more.
Change it A, B, C.
It could be like goal five.
I will.
Yep.
Okay.
Add numbers.
Yes, you don't have to take that.
Are we keeping those two bullet points, ideas of the progress the same? Under goal four? And do you want?
No, we're not.
The first one we changed, what about the second one? Under communication protocols.
We still need to know those things.
Right, I mean, I think that we will work with Dr. Battle to um.
You mean Dr. Daniels?
I mean, Dr. Daniels, yeah, sorry. Um, to.
It's going to be hard.
Oh, I had it like a minute ago. Laughing about goal five.
I think it's a little bit confusing because we're saying we're going.
We're gonna.
Will do that, and then the measure of progress is that we're going to do that.
So I think we remove the bullet point, because that is missing a step.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, so under measures of progress, under goal four, measures of progress, there'll just be one bullet?
Under goal four, members of the district 191.
Okay.
Will delete, clarify expectations with Dr. Battle. Because we have.
With Dr. Daniels?
With Dr. Daniels.
Yep.
And leave bullet point, the bullet point three, under measures of progress, board members will work with Dr. Daniels. Because that's a specific thing.
Got it. It's a way we're measuring the onboarding.
So then we, I would propose that we change that to say to review and set the board super, because I don't think we're clarifying something.
We're creating them.
Yes, and that's the word that keeps coming up, but we don't need to do that. So to, I would say, review and set.
We're not even reviewing, we're just.
Yeah, to review, yeah, okay. To set the board's super intelligent communication protocols to ensure and lay a clear expectations.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I heard just a couple of different things, so I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly. The board members will work with Dr. Daniels to, I heard review, create and set?
No.
Only set.
Only set.
But didn't we already set up above?
We're removing that one, we're removing that whole bullet point and we're making it just.
That's the thing that's gonna be evidence.
It's getting close to our bedtime. We're starting to get.
That, that's the whole part I missed.
All right. And are we moving on to five now? Are, is there? You were already there, so.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm like, I'm sleepwalking, but it's like, I'm sleep, sleep talking, I think is what I would call it. Um. Is everyone okay then with goal five, goal four?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so yes, we are now moving to goal five. And so I think, I guess after talking and speaking before thinking, um, we would probably just reword it to say special projects for 2025, 2026, specifically surrounding long-term facilities, school name changes, um, sale of buildings.
Do we need to specify all the things?
Open facilities, okay. All right, so yeah, um, open facilities. Can we just say all the things?
Yeah, I mean, could we, do we have to say this specifically? Can we just say special products?
Yeah, special, can we just say, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, special projects in 2024, 2025, period.
Well, but we do need to, I mean, specifically open facility, open facilities and and long-term um, facilities, that's a known thing. And school name change, yes.
Yeah.
Unless we want to, unless we want to put it under.
Can you just bullet point them out?
Oh, yeah, like below.
Yeah, bullet point them out below.
It could be down below.
Booting, right.
Okay.
Period.
So the goal five will just read the special projects and then under measures of progress, am I changing that to measures of progress slash special projects? Or did you want me to just list the special projects underneath there under bullets, kind of like it is now?
Yes.
Okay. And I captured open facilities, should I put open facilities slash long-term facilities?
Open facilities and long-term planning is different.
Different, so it'll be two bullets, so one, two, school name change, I thought I heard three.
And still.
Sale of.
Sale of properties.
Yep. And it's not just Metcalfe, well.
No, it's properties.
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 Well. Successful closure and sale of Metcalfe and Sioux Trail, that's.
Mm hmm. Are they the only two left?
Well, they're the only ones that have a bid. MW Savage is just sitting there right now with no interest. So it's not, it's not like it's impending, we have.
No, but. From some point during the year, it could.
It could, it could. If we wanted to add it, we could.
I mean, if you just left it as property. What do you think? What do you think?
Anna.
There, when we talked to the city of Savage, they, they are ready to.
Help move it.
Yep.
So to clarify, sale of properties?
Properties, yes.
Yep.
Um, I don't know how we, what we put for. Okay, so learn and understand project, each project in the district, I think we could keep that.
I think both of those bullets were.
Mm hmm, as far as to the community, sharing information about the special projects. Mm-hmm, as well as to the community sharing information about the special projects.
Do we need anything about? I mean, we don't do anything with the design teams.
Well, we, we, we approve the.
So.
The guiding change document comes before you for each.
Right, so is that something that needs to be listed?
We could.
What was that, Justin?
I don't know how the word that, is it approving the guiding change document from the?
Special projects.
Or various designs?
Guide, off, provide guidance. And approval as needed. In special projects.
Yeah.
Provide guidance and approval as needed for.
Special projects, but that's kind of.
You do that anyway though, right? I mean, do we have to? Respond so.
Yeah, true.
What?
Well, provide, and that's up above, so we don't need to have it down below.
Yes.
So take and strike me out.
I think there should be something about including the community voice.
Yes, I, I was thinking about too. Putting a, like transparency, or the word transparency in there somewhere.
And did it serve as a voice of the community?
Yeah.
To that?
Sharing information, information.
Is that not already included in our? Other goal above? Do we not already have?
In goal, the goal five.
Seek input.
But I mean, if, we have a whole goal just on that.
True.
That would be for everything we do.
Okay, yep. All right.
I think we can strike the third. Bullet point under measure of progress, because we have open facilities defined above.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But, but isn't the measure of progress that we are moving forward not?
Well, successful closure and sale of properties is open facilities.
Okay, but there's, are there, there's not other open facilities? Just those things?
Not yet. I mean.
Would it?
There hasn't been any talk about closing another school.
Right, I, um. The other facilities project, the long, maybe that's what I was thinking of, the long.
Gotcha.
Right?
So change, so change.
See forward momentum with our long-term facilities plan.
And the open, okay.
Not the open, not the open, but the, but the long-term.
Right. There's a lot of words that.
We're getting there.
I got, I got great words.
Um.
All the words.
So that could be successful. Um. Planning and. Oh, I'm trying to think of the right words, because, because there's a lot involved with the long-term facilities, and we have a lot of work to do on that. I want to say success, because I don't know, because we can't say completed.
But forward momentum seems like a open, yeah.
Forward momentum.
For what, what do you, what are you classifying as forward momentum though? Because there's a lot you're doing as part of it, you have to like. Go before, you know, different, you know, committees that are vetting, like, whether deciding which, how to prioritize different projects. And determine which things, you know, need to be.
How much is going to get done in one year?
Yeah.
So that comes in the guiding change.
Right.
Yeah, that's the detail in the guiding change.
Details.
Yep.
That's why that guiding change is so.
Yep, so where do you measure the progress on that? By having the guiding change document approved? What, that's what I'm trying to get at.
You want more specific than forward momentum.
So you could get reports. On, once we decide the priorities on each project, that's one way.
Okay, so. Um.
Just like you do the.
Regular reports, like, uh huh.
And, and budget review.
No, because we construct, you know, prices change.
Budget review and approval, so approval of, of design, design.
Yeah.
What's the name of it again?
Guiding.
Guiding change.
Guiding change document.
Change, guiding change. Along with, um. Budget review and approval. As needed.
So for example, if a construction code goes up, they come with a change order, because sometimes it can be massive.
Vision 191.
So that's the budget, you gotta go back, they're saying, nope. Timber, lumber's going up.
It is going up again.
Yep. Okay.
And it's terrible quality.
I just want to be sure I'm capturing the thoughts. I have been, I have the main. One, two, three, four. I have kind of four measures of progress, but I need a little help filling in the final tweaks before the language. I have open facilities. Are we keeping it with the forward momentum in open facilities, or is there words going before open facilities?
We're removing open facilities.
Open facilities is coming up.
It's long-term facilities.
Okay, and then, then it, there was that discussion about forward momentum and long-term facilities, but that's being. Stricken, and we're going with long-term facilities. Uh, regular reports, budget reviews, and guiding change.
Approval of.
Approval of, yeah.
Approval of guiding change and review of budget.
Review and approval.
Review and approval of budget.
As needed.
As needed.
As needed.
So that goes with long-term facilities. School name change, is there?
I mean, that sort of has the same words. Right, is this a guiding change, and there's going to be budgeting for that?
Say, yeah, just ditto for, for name change.
Mm-hmm. Ditto language for school name change? And then we, for sale of properties, I had successful closure. And sale of properties?
I think we remove closure.
Yeah.
There has been no discussion.
The closing.
I think it means closing on the property. Like, we need to go to close.
Then it would be sale and. That's the sale. Sale.
That's the sale, right?
Right.
That's what I thought at first.
Closure is about closing.
Process.
Yeah, that's just.
Oh, okay, so there's, there's, they're calling it like when you close the school, that's what they're calling that? Oh, okay.
Yeah. Got it. So just the sale of property.
Okay.
So successful.
Also, closing is part of the sale.
Right, closure is part of this, okay.
Okay. I'll send it out.
Are we done? Are we done? Yes.
So for goal six.
Okay. Look, hang on, what time is it?
Where's your script?
I've got it, I just got to get the time. Okay.
You have to.
Time is 9:07, and having no further agenda items, I call to adjourn this meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education. All right.